I'd like to call the July 18th, 2022 Surrey County Board of Commissioners meeting to order. And at this time, I'll ask Commissioner Mark Marion to offer our invocation and a pledge of allegiance.
Right. What kind of grace is heavenly, Father, would come to you tonight, asking your blessings upon this meeting, and your blessings upon everyone this present. Father will come to you tonight with a heavy heart. Former Commissioner Sam Couch lost his life Saturday. Bless his family. Wrap your arms around them in this hard time they're dealing. Father, pray for all of our armed forces, or and at home, and all our men and women in uniform, no matter which way it is. Please, our medics, keep them safe so they can go back to their family. Once again, I want to ask your blessings upon this meeting. Give us the wisdom to make decisions that are pleasing to you and will benefit the citizens of Surrey County. These many blessings I ask in your name. Amen. My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of America, where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, the community and the justice.
All right, gentlemen, I'm looking for approval of this evening's agenda.
So a motion, Mr. Chairman?
Motion by Commissioner Tucker. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Harris. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Looking for approval of June 20, excuse me, June 20, 22, meeting minutes?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Marion. Do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Johnson. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. For our consent agenda, I'll turn that over to our county manager, Chris Knopf.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First item is to revise the Jones Family Resource Center assignment amended resolution, basically to allow the county manager to execute that document in the absence of the chairman a couple of weeks ago. Second item is for an EMS Bridge Medication Assisted Treatment Program grant. Third, the Tax Department end of month summaries, charges, and reports. Fourth item is to approve an easement for Duke Energy, provide power to the Elkin City Schools Gymnasium Project at the high school and middle school. Next item is workers' compensation with the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners. Next, registered deeds position reclassification. Parks and Recreation request to apply for and accept grants utilizing their investments Surrey allocation as a match. From Finance, we have Budget Amendment Number One with capital project ordinances included. And we have an ambulance purchase. There's an $8,500 increase in that item that needs to be approved by the board. And then there's an add-on item, which each of you have at your spot. It's a memorandum from Miranda Jones, the purchasing agent. And this is to increase our federal micro purchase threshold, which is required under uniform guidance. And that is the consent agenda, Mr. Chairman.
Do I have a motion to approve our consent agenda? Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman. Motion by Commissioner Johnson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Marion. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. This time, we have special recognitions for citizen life saves. And we'll come up front and recognize those, recognize two individuals this evening.
Okay, Mr. Brian, Brian Vilegoz. You're welcome. This is a certificate of recognition from the County of Surrey to Brian Vilegoz, Surrey Central High School. Brian has hereby presented this certificate of recognition in honor of his life-saving actions, being made aware of an overdose victim in the parking lot of his employment, contributing to a successful resuscitation. The board wishes to honor Brian Vilegoz for an outstanding citizen in his quick response of saving the life of a Surrey County residence, resident this 18th day of July, 2022, by the Surrey County Board of Commissioners, Bill Goins, Eddie Harris, Larry Johnson, Mark Marion, and Van Tucker. Congratulations, sir. Thank you.
This one reads the same, but I think it's worthy that I, that I read it to you. County of Surrey. Abraham Mendez, Surrey Central High School. Certificate of recognition. Is hereby presented this certificate of recognition in honor of his life-saving actions, being made aware of an overdose victim in the parking lot of his employment, contributing to a successful resuscitation. The board wishes to honor Abraham Mendez for being an outstanding citizen for his quick response in saving the life of a Surrey County resident. Presented this the 18th day of July, 2022, by the Surrey County Board of Commissioners, Bill Goins, Eddie Harris, Larry Johnson, Mark Marion, and Van Tucker. Congratulations.
Good job, guys. Thank you very much. Congratulations, guys. At this time, we'll have our open forum, which we give citizens an opportunity to talk about just about anything they want to. We give you three minutes. If you'll state your name and phone number, at this time, the open forum is open. See you none. Kim Morrison and Jay Temple, Mount Airy City Schools. We'll, we'll skip over that and go to Marty Needham, Development Services Director. Public hearing rezoning case ZCR 1222, Terramore Development LLC, 2953 Westfield Road, Mount Airy.
Evening Commissioners. This is case number ZCR 1222. This is a conditional rezoning. The applicant is Terramore Development LLC. The proposal is to reclassify 2.3 acres of rural business conditional to allow retail use for Dollar General on the property. Current zoning is RG. Proposed zoning is RBC. Property is located at the corner of 2953 Westfield Road and Quaker Road. The case was presented to the planning board on Monday, July 11th. Members from the developer and the community were allowed to speak. The planning board denied the request. There were five of the non-planning board members present, and the vote was unanimous. That's it.
I will close the, our regular meeting and open a public hearing on the zoning, rezoning case ZCR 1222. And you may come forward to state your name and telephone number if you speak.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. My name is Mike Fox, and I'm an attorney here representing the applicant tonight. In addition to myself, there are two other folks here with me. I presume, is your practice, you'd like to hear from us first and then the public comments? Okay, great, thank you. If I could, let me hand out some packages of material that should be on for each of you. If I could start on maybe one end, is that all right? Thank you, good evening. Again, my name is Mike Fox, and I'm here as an attorney representing the applicant in this case. I have with me Joe Strickland, who's a development director for Terramore Development, which is developer in this project, and Derek Goddard, who is a licensed engineer. We're here tonight because we believe that this request to rezone the 2.3 acres from RG to RB is a reasonable request and fits within your development ordinance and your 2040 land use plan. And as you heard earlier, your staff is recommending approval as well. This is for a neighborhood serving commercial use, specifically a Dollar General is planned here. These type stores are not destinations because they generally do, they don't generate destination traffic. They're drive-by traffic, and they're used by local residences for their convenience. I would remind you that this is a conditional zoning request, and the applicant is open to reasonable conditions that would make this use a better fit with the neighbors, if that comes up. Typically, these type of conditions relate to enhanced landscaping and buffering and upgraded facades. We're willing to discuss those with the board. What I'd like to do is ask Joe Strickland to come up, and he's got a brief presentation on Terramore and the area. And then I'll make Mr. Goddard available for any questions about the site plan. And then I have some additional materials I'd like to share with you. If you'd look, the first thing in your package is a color map of the area that indicates the zoning. The second thing in the package is a copy of Mr. Strickland's presentation, and that is, looks like this. It says Shelton Town rezoning request. So Joe, would you come up and, you want to walk through that?
Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate you allowing me to speak tonight. Many of you know, my name is Joe Strickland. I'm the Director of Operations, Terramore Development. Terramore works in 22 counties here in North Carolina, Surrey County being one of them. Terramore will complete its 500th new store this year for Dollar General. Now, that is in three states, not one, just three that we work in. We work in North Carolina, Georgia, and Florida as well. The proposed site is the new prototype, 10,640 square feet, that will offer, and what is considered DG fresh, which means there could potentially be some fresh produce in this store, depending on the need in the area. But what it does is it enhances the cooler and freezer spaces as well to allow more grocery-type items for the store. Terramore Development has developed five new stores in Surrey County in the last four years. We, we have invested 10-plus million dollars worth of economic impact into this county in the last four years. Now, that's, that's just an initial development. That doesn't include the tax, the tax sales tax generated from the stores or the property tax paid. That was just the development impact we've had on this county. The stores that I'm talking about is State Road, US 21, Beulah Church Road, White Pines, which is off 52, there at the old Mobile Home Park, I think it was. The Zeppa Road, which we just completed, Cook School Road in Pilot Mountain. And we've got a new store approved on Riverside and Mountain View Drive that will be a 2023 location. I was asked a question last time I was before this board about how many stores in this county, Dollar Generals. There's 18. I wanted to make sure that I answered that tonight so we'd know for sure. The next page shows the zoning overlay for, or highway, for the highway there. I'm sorry. This one. Westfield Drive, or Westfield Road. And as you can see, our site being in green, we back up to a Mobile Home Park. And then we are 1,100 feet roughly from the first residential business, what they call residential rural business, that, that would be close enough in proximity to us. The Surrey County Planning Department supported our request. And the rezoning request is consistent with your 2040 comprehensive plan. And there's 14 acres of, of commercially zoned property along what is considered, I think, the, the byway, North Carolina byway, or whatever it's called, that they mentioned in the, in the planning board meeting a week ago. 14 acres. It's a lot of property being zoned commercially through that stretch there. And as you can see on the next page, I took some pictures of, of the commercial uses along that byway. Moore's General Store being one of them. Poe Folks being the other. There's numerous No Dollar General signs out through there. The Trading Post being another. Custom Craft Woodworks being another. There's an old Hyatt Grocery Store. I don't know what its use is currently, but I think it was used in years past as some sort of a general store, if I'm not mistaken. There's also an accounting office that's being used, Ivan House. Got a huge, I don't know what it is. It says Gammon's Auto Sales, but I mean, it's probably the largest area that's zoned out there commercially. I think it's, it backs up to, to the Trading Post there. I think it's the next parcel down below it. The next slide that I have is, you know, they talked about some traffic safety concerns that the citizens had in this area. I mean, clearly, by the slides that I have here, there's a tremendous amount of problems along Westfield. I mean, there's no controlled access whatsoever in and out of any of these businesses. I mean, our site plan that we've got presented here tonight shows one means of ingress and egress, and it's on Quaker. And that means, you know, we wouldn't, we wouldn't access off onto Westfield. We would access directly on the Quaker, and then traffic would go whichever way it needed. And I'm not, I'm not trying to cast, you know, stones here, but I mean, clearly, what we've got shown is a better situation for the area. And I think clearly that, that we can control the access and the traffic by what we've presented. And I ask you tonight to, to approve our rezoning request based on Surrey County's planning staff recommendations, your 2040 plan, and the slide that I presented with the commercially zoned properties along Westfield, and that Dollar General would supply the essential needs for the Shelton Town community. And I'm here for questions.
Is this, this proposed site here, and I grew up over in that area, but refresh my memory here, that, your nearest store to here is over Flat Rock, is that correct?
Our nearest store is probably two and a half miles from here, yes, sir. By road miles, it's two and a half miles.
And that's over there at Flat Rock, right?
Yes, it is.
Yeah.
I'm just curious, you know, I'm shopping at Dollar General stores occasionally across the county. They've been good for the most part, I think, for Surrey County, even though I think all these requests ought to be considered on a case-by-case basis. But I'm just curious. You know, I go to the south end of the county, the east end of the county, the eastern district of the county. I don't see very many Dollar Generals out of your, or 18. So I guess you, you look at demographics, of course, you look at population, of course. But what would make, what would make you want to put, in this case, I heard somebody say 1.7, you said 2.5, but in a radius of about a five-mile radius, there's, there's four or five stores there.
Yes, sir.
Can I ask, just curious, maybe that's, maybe that's a secret business assessment. But why do you have five stores in one little radius like that?
Well, market planning, which analyzes all these locations, they've generated an aerial stating that, that this area will support probably about a million, $1.3 million sales generator a year here of this location.
So you feel like, you feel like there's ample room there for one store or more?
Absolutely. Well, in the Shelton community, yes, sir, Shelton Town community, for sure, yeah. I mean, I-
Do you do that based on what? Demographics, population within a certain perimeter of those stores?
They start out at 1.5 miles, sir.
Start out at 1.5?
Yes, sir. And there's enough households to support it. And I was, I was in the area Friday, and I mean, that is a busy area through there, for sure. I mean, I sat probably right below Moore's General Store for probably about an hour, just counting cars and things of that nature. There's a lot of traffic through there, and we want to capitalize on it. We think it's a great opportunity for us to get into the market. Yes, sir.
I noticed the pictures were made of all these commercial properties.
Yes, sir.
It's my neck of the woods also. Looks like to me that every commercial property there is family-owned.
It could be, yeah.
And I don't, it appears, I mean, they're dependent, of course, they love vacationers or drive-through business, but they're, they're dependent on the community itself, it appears to me.
Yeah.
And so I just wanted to bring that up. They're all privately, family-owned, and had been there for quite some time. I don't think there's anything new in several, several years that, that's been, that's been put in far as commercial-wise.
Yeah.
All right, thank you for those questions. We were obviously at the planning board meeting and heard the concerns from many residents in the area, and I want to take a few minutes to address a few of those. You know, my summary of it is, many people spoke of the rural nature of the area and objected to commercial activity there. There were concerns about traffic, crime, and the impact of, on property values. I want to address each of those. There was also, as you've noted, a tremendous amount of support for and concern for an existing local business, the general store that's there. Obviously, all these concerns are sincere and heartfelt. However, we believe many of them are based on emotion, you know, rather than facts. And I wanted to provide some information to you tonight just to talk a little bit about the, the facts as we see them. And this zoning map is certainly, you know, a good illustration of it in that, to hear, to hear the conversation at the planning board, Moore's General Store was, was the only commercial activity. And it may be the busiest commercial activity, but clearly, all this blue and the red is commercially zoned activity. So to say that, that this is not an area in which there's commercial activity is just not accurate or commercial zoning. So I wanted to, to set the record straight on that. The next thing that I would like to address is the property, the, the property values issue. In your package, there is a, a letter and a report from Kirkland Appraisals. And Mr. Kirkland is an MAI-certified appraiser. He has done a number of appraisals, looking at what the, the impact of particular businesses on nearby property values. And we asked him to provide a analysis for us on this one. And he has concluded that, you know, if, if a Dollar General store were located on this particular site that we're requesting, that there would not be any negative impact on the adjoining property values. He bases that on common appraiser techniques, where they, they look at other sites where there's, you know, similar businesses, and they judge the value before and after. And so we would submit that to you, that, that, you know, there will not be a, a negative impact on, on property values related to that. The, the next bit of information that I have for you is a report. It is this report here, and it's got some additional call log activity behind it. This report addresses the question of potential crime. And we asked Ken Miller, who is the head of the ISS Agency. They are a law enforcement consulting group. Mr. Miller himself, as you could see from his letter, he's a retired police chief in three significant jurisdictions, has devoted a lot of his career to the analysis of crime statistics. He requested data from the County 911 Communication Center and for three years and did an analysis. And he looks at not just a Dollar General store, but any kind of, you know, store like that, including convenience stores. And his professional opinion is, is that, you know, stores like this do not generate a lot of crime, and they do not cause an increase in crime. And typically, the, if there is crime there, it's, it's a crime against property, which is typically a shoplifting of some sort. It is not a, a violent crime. And so I would say the, the crime issue, the analysis would be the same for any similar type businesses, including the, the existing business that's there. They talked, you know, rather candidly at the planning board meeting about the efforts they've taken to make sure that there's no crime in the area with the security cameras and everything. So, you know, this additional commercial business would be in the same situation, so there's no, no difference. We believe that you, the crime issue is, is one that is more based on emotion and fear rather than fact. There was also, Joe addressed the, the, the transportation and the traffic issues. We feel like that the plan that we have here tonight actually has safer access onto the road than many of the existing businesses. And that is, like Joe said, that is not a, a knock against the existing businesses. Many of them may have been there for years, and that's just the access that was developed. And so that's what it is. They might not have the same access if they started from scratch today, given the rules. But we feel like that there's not a, there's not an issue with traffic or, or safety concerns there. The, the other thing that, you know, a couple of other things I really wanted to point out is, is just this perception that this is not a area that's for commercial zoning. You saw the pictures that Joe had, and you've seen the map. The, it's, it's, there was some discussion about it being a scenic byway, which, which it is. And, and the North Carolina Department of Transportation, you know, has that program. They put these, these books out. This is a part of the, you know, there's a large part of what is called the Sawertown Mountains Scenic Byway. There is absolutely nothing in this book, or nothing in the Department of Transportation rules, that say you can't have a commercial business on a scenic byway. Now, they do say, you typically don't find them on major thoroughfares like, you know, the interstate or 52 or, you know, some other major roads. And there's, you know, certainly, you know, this scenic byway is, is well-deserving and, you know, a great asset to the community. But I would note, if you look carefully, the scenic byway actually includes, you know, three towns. It includes Mount Airy, Danbury, and the town, Town of Pilot Mountain, which there's clearly plenty of commercial activity there. There's also commercial activity along the existing scenic byway, even in this spot. And it's, it is a beautiful stretch of road, but the addition of this additionally zoned property would not take away from that in the least. You know, in regards to the community's support for the, the local business, there's absolutely nothing wrong with that. That's a great thing. And Commissioner Johnson, you, you pointed out that many of those businesses are family-owned, but it's not the, that, that's not a zoning consideration, whether there's a family-owned business or not. And it's really, you know, I mean, I think most parts, most folks in this part of the world believe in small government. You know, the government not getting into every part of everybody's lives, and people having property rights and the ability to do, you know, within the law, what they want to do with their property. And it's just not the job of government to pick winners and losers in the economy. Just like you wouldn't, you know, turned out, you know, if there was a fast food, you know, restaurant at the corners, you wouldn't choose, you wouldn't say, well, I don't want a Bojangles, I want a Hardee's or a McDonald's. You look at the land use, and how a business is owned doesn't make any difference in the zoning law, and it shouldn't make any difference to the government. All businesses contribute to the economy. Small businesses are great. They are the backbone of, of a lot of our economies, and they're to be commended. But it shouldn't be a factor at all that it is locally owned. I have no doubt, based on- I have no doubt, based on what, you know, I heard in the planning board, that, that the general store, regardless of, if the Dollar General were to be approved, it would succeed and, and still thrive. We've seen this situation in, in other areas, in another county that we had a store in. There was a nearby local business very similar to Moore's. And that was really the main concern was, hey, this is going to put this store out of business. I happen to own some property near that store in that rural county and that store is thriving. It's a, it's a different set of customers to some degree with different needs. The, the Dollar General nearby offers some things that they don't have in the general store and vice versa. The Dollar General doesn't sell gas. The Dollar General doesn't provide the farm materials or the, or the, the, the feed that we heard that, that Moore's does. And so we don't believe that, it's not an either or, it can be a both and. The, the approval of one does not mean the, the failure of another. So we think that it, it is entirely appropriate that people want to strongly support their local businesses. That's how it should be. But it doesn't mean that it should, that they should exclude other businesses that, that are not locally owned, that do contribute to the tax base. The last thing that I want to point out to you is a letter here that we have provided from a professional land use planner, Amanda Hodierrin. And Amanda would have been here tonight, but she had a, a conflict that she could not be. Her qualifications are, she's, was a land use planner for 10 years, worked for various municipalities, then went back to law school and became a land use lawyer like what I do. So she's very experienced and she looks in detail at, you know, counties and, and cities' land use plans, their current development ordinance and their future development ordinance. And it's her opinion, as you can, you know, read in this letter, that the commercial development that's being requested on this site is consistent with your current land use development ordinance and your future land use plan. Because neighborhood and locally serving businesses are consistently viewed as consistent with areas like this that have a, have a population. They're not the density of a, of a town, but they're, you know, they, they have a lot of people living there. And to answer Commissioner Tucker's question, they have a, I'm not privy to the, to the data that, you know, the Dollar General does to decide where a store goes. But it's a pretty sophisticated formula and they're, they're pretty good at it. You don't see these, these new stores that, that they open up, they do well and, and they stay in business and they provide, you know, it's good services to the community. And that's the, you know, it's, it's a, it's more of a convenience type thing. It's not a destination. It was explained to me one time that if you were to go to a grocery store and, you know, particularly a bigger grocery store and you were to look to buy detergent, you might have 40 different choices of detergent. You know, different brands and shapes and smells and all that. But Dollar, Dollar General would have those same brands, those, you know, whatever the, the big brands are, but they might only have five or six choices. So you still have the, the, the quality and, and the good products at a, at a good price, but you just don't have the, the variety that you do. And there's a lot of people that, that as they're going to and from work, they need to stop and pick something up from dinner, for dinner, or they sell other household goods. If you need paper plates, you're having people over for the Fourth of July. It's a very convenient, locally serving business for that. And without exception, in everyone I've been involved in where people have been against in the community, those people eventually become customers and they realize that it is a beneficial thing to them. And as a matter of fact, the one that is near where I own property, I regularly see some of the most vocal opponents in their shopping and, and they say, you know, I'm not going to say you're right, but this is convenient. So that I think is something that, you know, this board can consider. We know that, you know, change is difficult, particularly in, you know, I, I learned a lot at the planning board about this community as it is a very close knit community. I think if, you know, the, the name Hyatt came up a lot. I don't know how many people that live there are either Hyatts or related to Hyatts, but it seemed like a very high percentage to me, which is great. And people like to live there and that's a, that's a great thing for a community. If all of our communities were, were, were proud of their community like that, we'd be a much better place. But that doesn't mean that, that something else can't come in. That it, it doesn't have to be an either or, it can be a both and. And we feel like that, you know, a Dollar General store at this location would be an addition to the community, not a subtraction. And so we'd ask you to support your staff recommendation and approve this. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Good evening, gentlemen. Last Monday night, we presented you with a petition with 1,027 signatures that were to the planning board. Tonight, we have a petition. I'm sorry. My name's Melissa Hyatt and I live at 132 Holly Book Trail. My phone number is 336-755-8566. And most everybody from Terramore already knows me because they Googled me, LinkedIn me, Facebook me. They know more about me than y'all do now. So to start over, last Monday night, we gave you a petition with 1,027 signatures. Tonight, I'm handing over to you 171 more, which totals 1,198. I'd like to ask if you have seen or heard the transcript from Monday night's planning board? Because if you have, it'll save me a lot of time in educating you on something that you wrote. So I trust that most of you have. Thank you. I'll spend my time making corrections to what these gentlemen have presented because I won't say they're not telling the truth, but they're not the experts on Surrey County. We are, and they're definitely not the experts on Shelton Town. We are because it's where we live. I've made it my home for 30 years. My husband's family has made it his, their home for 200 years. So I think the folks that you'll hear from tonight are the true experts on Shelton Town in Surrey County. First of all, I'd like to correct the fact that Mr. Fox and Mr. Strickland referenced to the fact that it was recommended. It may have been recommended by the planning board, but I'm going to give a little leeway to Marty because he's been in his position for six months. And this is a whole lot for anybody to learn and regurgitate accurately in six months. Although I've read it about 18 times in the past 18 days and I'm pretty sure where the lines are on everything. Secondly, they spoke of the fact that it would potentially, potentially have fresh products in it, that it would be a DG fresh. They stood before you before and said that all of theirs new ones had it. They stood in the planning board meeting and said it would have it. So that has changed since Monday night. So it's now potentially versus what was a week ago and a month ago when they stood before you. Secondly, they talk about these 500 stores that they have created lately. It's funny because I did a little looking too, when I saw I was getting looked into. And some of these folks live in neighborhoods that I believe in the June 26 Davidson County Commissioners Meeting, Mr. Fox made the statement that a neighborhood is about one and a half to two miles radius. Well, in one and a half to two miles radius in Shelton Town, we have three Dollar Generals. Two, three general stores, one being a, a full grocery store. And yes, we do have some other businesses there, but you're comparing apples to baseballs. I don't go to a car lot to buy milk and I'm sure you don't either. It makes no sense at the comparison. Secondly, the fact that the gentleman I'm speaking of lives 10 minutes from a Dollar General and I checked, there are seven parcels available within a mile and a half of his house, but there's no, no development of a Dollar General there. So I guess what's goose to the gander is not good for the rest of us, you know? They, they don't have to put them in their own neighborhood. They want to put them in ours. I'd also like to correct the fact that someone made the statement that in the area, I believe it was Mr. Strickland, that there are no Dollar, there are no Dollar General signs all over the place. That is an absolute lie. The signs say no rezoning. We didn't make this about Dollar General, they did. We didn't know for sure that's what it was until the conversations came and that came from them. So when you look at the land use plan, the thing that's the most important to me is that they talk about the development growth area that is in the land use plan of what it shows in 2039. That development area stops about 200 yards, if you blow the plan up large enough and look at it, from Reeves Mill Road. And I would suggest that's probably because that's where city and city water and sewer stop. There is none other out the road that way and it would cost an enormous amount of money to bring it out that way. But that being the case, last week it was noted that was about two or three tenths out the road. There's a difference in a mile and a half and two or three tenths out the road. It is nowhere near the growth area. You never expected it to be. You didn't include it in the growth plan for you were part of that, the planning department was part of that, several people in the county were. There was never an expectation that there would be growth in that area, that we have to protect part of our community to keep green space. Green space is what brings tourism to Surrey County. It is not Dollar Generals. And I looked at the fact that Surrey County is, let me find this number, 536 square miles. We currently have 18. If we needed one every two miles, could you imagine what that would look like? Most of you own some land or some of you own some land that's more than two miles. Do you want one in the middle of it? And it's not against, it's not against DG. I appreciate the fact that they've dropped $10 million in Surrey County over the past couple of years. It is good for the best case. But when you think about all of those things that I have brought up, the most important part that we discussed is 5.7 of commercial development in the land use plan. 5.7 says to encourage isolated business in predominantly rural areas on a case by case basis if, if the amenities provided are not available in the immediate vicinity. We have two general stores. We have a grocery store, all within two miles. If you count the way the road lies, as he says, road miles, we actually have three within two miles because it's like two and a tenth to Airport Road, if you go 52. Now, if you want to go the long way, it's a little longer. But we have three in two miles. We have five in five miles and 10 within 12 miles, 11, which wants the one on Mountain View. So in the beginning, I believe it was Mr. Fox who said, it's not your position for government to pick winners and losers. It's not, never has been. It's your position to follow the land plan that you wrote. And the general statute of 150 charges you to follow the land plan that you write. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Mary Roche. My number is 336-401-1956. Actually have a few things and I took note of what Terramore has stated and I would like to talk about that first. Like Melissa said, I would like to add a couple of things. For me personally, I do deal in facts and impact. I do want to ask a couple of questions to Mr. Strickland. Right? You said they grasp the exit and entrance would be on Quaker Road. Would there not be one on Westfield Road and North Carolina 89? Okay, is that the only one planned that's in the, the blueprint plan? Okay. If you know that area and you know where Ayersville Road is, if you know where Quaker Road is and Westfield, North Carolina Highway 89, I don't have prints, but it's pretty much a, a triangle. In the mid 90s, I feel like this is the fact that I can bring to this part. In the mid 90s, I owned a, my husband and I owned a trucking company. I still am a licensed CDL holder. I cannot imagine going, driving a truck and I'm not going before against trucks or against trucks or for whatever. I'm not trying to bring that to the table. I'm trying to bring to the table, when I moved here from Forsyth County many, many years ago, going up Quaker Road, there used to be a lake in that area. So of course there's water access, but I'm going to be focusing on the fact of if you go up the hill toward where Mr. Strickland said, the exit and entrance for Dollar General. And if you have been to a Dollar General or any, like said, business, it is, it can get busy. You will go what I would consider a blind spot maybe. And if you go up the hill, there is a blind spot. I'm going to use that term, not a DOT term. And right after that is what they said, a trailer park or apartment. If you have been in that area, you know that there are children there. We have children. And when my children got their license, I always told them two things about that area. On 89, there is the only no passing zone. That, they know what that is from getting their license. That's a fact from the license bureau. But what is not known only by the people that live in that area or that know that there are trees there, that there would be more ice there. And it is a, can be possibly a flooded area, not completely flooded, but heavily watered with, if the rains come over from the ditch, it just floods. But the, to know that on Quaker Road, that when you're driving from Flat Rock into Shelton Town in the land in question, I worry because I've been in a tractor trailer. I'm trying to figure out how we would have, and I do not own it now, turn right to go. I'm assuming, I would hope that you would not have to take part of the church parking lot or the church lane. I know the government owns 80. Is that a factor in this or not? I'm just asking.
That's a question, Derek, but we have a template that shows that tractor trailer would maneuver in and out of that site.
Okay, so when you're driving a tractor trailer and cars are coming up, tractor trailers have the right to stop. A car, a four wheeler or car has to back up. A tractor trailer cannot and will not back up. They will wait.
If you would, if you would address this.
Okay. A tractor trailer has to stop in the road. A tractor trailer cannot back up for safety reasons because they cannot see what's behind them. My concern for this instance is the fact that that is a blind spot and a tractor trailer, I have to assume, would be turning right to go to 89 or left to go down Quaker Road to go to Flat Rock, where on both ends, left or right, is a Dollar General. And within the same. Also, I would like to note about the businesses. They, I just wanted to reiterate, they are local businesses. I guess, and they also mentioned about the 1.3 million market analysis and the household and they're going to capitalize on it. And I think that's where my stance comes for tonight. Last week, I presented my stance on the area in question and the proximity to this area. Being a Surrey County resident, having a bachelor's degree in recreation and leisure studies, but by all means, being a lover of outdoor and nature. I knew I had to present amidst the conflicting and competing opinions. I needed to present and be a voice for others to protect Shelton Town, the scenic area in the way and the future of outdoor tourism in Surrey County. The good thing I found is that we do have the Surrey County Land Use Plan. Or I say how I do it when I do my speech or talk about this is the guide, the guidebook. A guidebook is something for nature. Not everything in the guide or my guidebook in my head or the Surrey County Land Use Plan is geared toward tourism or geared toward what I want to present. But it's a big indication, somebody could have that and know in 2040, that's, that the commissioners and the people involved, the agencies, the people wanted this. They needed it and they chose it. On, I want to quote the land use plan on page one, just a portion of it. It says, "Steadfast preservation of our farms, forest, waters, and scenic mountain views is also of great importance to Surrey citizens and is counted among values essential to the quality of life we share." and is counted among values essential to the quality of life we share." With the quality of life that we share in this area, we actually get to share this vital part. This is a chosen area. What I want to show or preserve for our future generations here in Surrey County around the land is what I spoke about last week, was the Surrey County Bike Way. In the Surrey County land or the guidebook, it is to promote tourism. It is within walking distance. And I'm not a zoning person, but I did the one elephant, two elephants, 10 elephants, if you want to say the count in 10 seconds to the sign that this is. The North Carolina Byway of Hanging Rock begins in that area too, is in close proximity as well as this triangle of those. The Bike Way is on Erisville Road. It's on Trail Number Four. The Scenic Byway for Hanging Rock is on NC 89. These two are of great importance to tourism. These two areas are vital to this area. For visitors and tourists who come to Surrey County to relax, to enjoy, to enjoy their recreation and outdoor activities, and just to enjoy Mayberry and everything else, they come to Surrey County for a slower pace of life. To continue my voice, for voice for us as Surrey County residents, but voices for others, not just for the people that live here, but people that do, who come here. I want to express again, who can enjoy and reap the benefits of the vast goals and the vision that we have for Surrey County in the preservation of our tourism. So for the person in the far corners of the world, or for the cyclist group in Raleigh who is chatting about their next bike route here in Surrey County on Trail Number Four, or the 15 or so kayakers, if you were in town this weekend, you saw them at the Derby eating with all their kayaks inside their car and on top of their trucks and wherever they were there. Or the couple out for a scenic drive and going on the NC Byway, or just the local resident planning a staycation here locally in Surrey County. Preserving this area in question is so important for now and our future. Please keep this area rural for future generations. Thank you.
Good evening. I know a few of you, my name's Jake Hutt. I live pretty close to there. My phone number is 336-710-0518. One thing I talked about last week was crime that follows these kind of things, these kind of businesses. It's not just specifically Dollar General. I've got some statistics. They are, they're public information. Anybody in this room could get them if they wanted them through communications as far as the call numbers. So one thing Mr. Fox mentioned was the retired chief that does the crime analysis. I don't know who that is. I'm not saying anything negative about him, but that's just, that's a small part of analyzing the actual crime that occurs. If you look at the crimes that have happened just this year at stores like Dollar General, being Family Dollars or other small things like that that are part of a chain, he said the majority of them were property crimes. That's maybe so as far as what actually gets reported and investigated and charges come from, that kind of thing. That's true. But there's only been, and this, these statistics are about 10 days old. It could have changed since then, probably not significantly. But property crimes being like larceny or property damage, those amount to less than 20 of the crimes that have occurred this year out of the 80 plus. I went back another year to last July. And if you count up every event that has had any law enforcement response at any of these stores in the last, since July 22nd last year, it's 861. That's a lot. I will concede the majority of those are security checks, a vast majority of them. But you don't do security checks in a place that doesn't need them, if that makes sense. So it's things like suspicious vehicle calls, suspicious person calls, the larcenies. One general thing is just suspicious activity. A lot of people, they think they see things and they call. Law enforcement has to go out. Most of the time it ends up being nothing, but it's still required their time, their response, their presence. One hand, it doesn't look good, and on the other hand, it makes people feel better that they're there. It could go either way. Drug activities, fights, domestics, just any kind of civil disturbance. So one of the stores had an employee call and request an escort to her vehicle on a regular basis just due to the high volume of suspicious people and suspicious activity in the evenings when she's closing the business. That was, while I'm thinking about it, that was one business. He mentioned that these businesses are not placed on major highways or interstates. That may be true about the interstate, but you know, here, you know, in a rural area like this, our major roads are 52, 89, 601. You can see the one on White Pines. It's right on the corner of 52. The newest one on Cook School Road, you can see it from 52, 103 East Pine Street, right across from Flat Rock School. There's one there. There's two right on 89. You turn off at 89 into their parking lots. So they are on our major roads. They are visible from our main roads. Most of the people that live within eyesight of this, where this could potentially be, have children, including me. I have two children. They're small. My sister has two children that are similar age and small that say frequent the area. I share a driveway with my parents within eyesight of where this store could be. The things, the negatives, these stores are convenient. Note, there's no doubt about that, and I appreciate their convenience. I frequent the one in Banner Town, just because it's easy. It's close to my house. But that convenience does not outweigh the things that we don't want to come along with it. That's not something that the people that are here tonight want something coming into their neighborhood. It's not all bad, but you have to take the good with the bad. I was counting today, thinking about it, there's about 14 houses that I can see sitting on my front porch without hardly moving. Seven of those are family member, and I think there are only four of them that don't have children there all the time. Again, about this law enforcement expert, he's a retired chief, and I appreciate his service. I don't know who he is, where he's from, or where he served, but he is retired, and I don't, I can't speak to his expertise. But due to my profession, I can talk about the things that go on here. I think it's fair to say. Law enforcement has changed in the last several years. It's not a, I don't want to say it's a young man's game, but it's more proactive than it used to be. It's not, you don't just sit and wait on things to happen. That's the reason for these security checks. You have to be out, you know, getting ahead of these people that are getting smarter and doing things that they shouldn't be doing. Some things that are not related to crime that I've noticed that were said tonight were, or I've heard said tonight, the second gentleman spoke, he said, "It's a good opportunity for us," meaning them. And with all due respect to them, they are being paid to be here this evening. Nobody else is speaking about this is, as far as I'm aware, anyway. And they're looking, they said, looking at the facts as they see them. It's my opinion, anyway, that you, there's no two ways to look at a fact. A fact is a fact. These are facts. These are the calls that have happened there. These are the EMS calls, law enforcement calls at just about every one of these stores in the county. I think 861 calls that does not need anything added to it. Some of the agencies in the county are struggling to stay staffed. And the ones that are fully staffed struggle to keep up. I can tell you, that's a fact. I'm not representing the sheriff's office tonight. I'm just speaking about something I know about and as somebody that lives in the community. Let's see, forgive me, public speaking is not my wheelhouse. I'm fumbling through my notes here. I think that's about it for me. Thank you.
Hi. Thank you, Commissioners for being here and allowing us the opportunity to speak. I'm grateful to live in this country where we can do that. So thank you for being here. I had not planned on speaking tonight, but my Hyatt blood will not allow that to happen, so. I'd like to address three aspects.
If you would state your name and number.
Oh, thank you, Bill. Melody Hyatt White, 336-755-2076. Is that it? Okay, thanks, Bill. So I'd like to address it on three points. I thought about this last week when I left. And to make it more clear, and everybody that's spoken has done an amazing job. But first on the land use, and I'm going to ask that these participants, these people here participate with me tonight. So for all of you who last week was here and heard the planning board, vote down this rezoning recommendation. Please stand. Thank you. For all, so in the land use in section five, and I emailed each of you commissioners over the weekend, my thoughts on this, and I emailed the points on this, and so I won't go through that whole aspect, but I would like to share that, and one thing that's already been touched on, is quality of life. Rural areas are the heartbeat of America. It is what makes us great. It is the essence of America. And I know, and I'm asking, I know that for me, the quality of life would be changed if this rezoning happened. I'm going to ask anyone here, if you feel that the quality of your life would be changed if this was rezoned, please stand. Now, if it would, no, do you not, do you, if you do not want the rezoning and you believe this would affect your quality of life, please stand. Thank you, Melissa. Thank you. Sorry for being unclear. I appreciate your participation. The other part of the land use plan in section five talks about that at any opportunity that commercial buildings can be put in clusters, then that is the best way to do it. That is the, the land use plan is that we do that. We have that. We have a Dollar General in the cluster within a 1.7 mile radius where the Derby, what's now called, I think Marketplace, what used to be Coddles, a Galaxy, and blah, blah, blah. And then we have it in another cluster on Flat Rock, in Flat Rock area. So we do have and have followed that land use plan for those things. This would not follow that land use plan in terms of a commercial cluster. There are exceptions to that, and those are exceptions are when you have five to six miles of highway and there is no place to stop. That's an ideal place to place a Dollar General, which again, we weren't going to make it about Dollar General, but since it has come forward, I will share it as that. So that is my comments on the land use aspect of it. From a professional standpoint, I'm a real estate agent. I helped, and I, and I know all of you received an email from one of my clients, Jay Carter, who he and his wife have been looking for 18 months for anywhere in the North Carolina area to resettle. I've showed them property everywhere. And we, they have decided to, and have, we close on Thursday, purchase a piece of property within an eighth of mile of this rezoning area. And I have asked permission to share what that amount is from both buyer and seller, and I'm allowed to do that. So they wanted rural area so much, they paid $450,000 for 12 acres. So rural areas mean something. They are a desired area, and if that was rezoned to something other than locally owned business, thank you, Larry, for bringing that up, it would change that landscape, and this would no longer be a valued piece of property for them. That is their opinion on that. As a, as a professional real estate agent, I do know that in a residential area that that would decrease these property values. So I'm not sure where the statistics that you got. If, if that were happening in a rural area of five to six miles of nothing, putting that there would raise the property value in that area. But we are not talking about that in Shelton Town. The third way I'd like to address this is personal. I know that you, one of, and I cannot remember your names, and I apologize. I know you guys are the messenger, and we're not, and it's not about shooting the messenger, so. But I am a Hyatt, and just so you know, first cousin wise, there was 137 of us in that area. So a lot of people. I have, I am an heir to 30 acres in that location. Actually, one of them that backs up right to that rezoning property, that property being discussed is being rezoning. So I do have some skin in the game on this. But I grew up there, and I've lived all over the world, and I've lived in beautiful locations, Hawaii, California. I've lived in beautiful places, but I have never found a place like Mount Airy, North Carolina, and I've never found a place like Shelton Town. And the thing that matters about that, when Larry mentioned that this was a local, that these were local businesses, and I think that Heather mentioned this, is the difference is if my child is sick in the middle of the night, I can call Heather and she will open that store for me, and she will get me what I need. But that will not be the case at a Dollar General. And that's what makes a difference in a, in a rural area. There is a couple other things I'd like to address to the fellows from Terramore. I hope we always keep emotion in the game, because emotion broken down, and I'm a an energy expert, I've done this for 25 years, speaking on kinetic energy and chains and kinesthetics, is emotion is energy in motion. And we are that. And it's, and, and from what I understand still to this day in this free country, is that what matters the most is these residents here that are speaking, that are here right now. So it's not as a big a concern about what Terramore wants, but it is a big concern about our residents want. So for all of you residents that are here tonight of the Shelton Town community who do not want to see this area rezoned, please stand once again. Thank you.
Triva Kurtman, 326-5090, local area code 336. I won't go speak tonight, but they, I'm just want to address where they're talking about the commercial property out in Shelton Town. Yeah, we've got some zoned property there, but almost all of it hadn't been used in years, and most of the people have retired. Gammans Auto Sales, it's been shut down for a couple of years. The Trading Post they mentioned is now been converted into apartments. There hadn't been any commercial trade there. That's at the end of my driveway, and at least probably a couple of years. They mentioned the Heights Grocery shut down, and I think this told me the other day, we were talking 1985. They said something about an accountant out there, and I don't know who that is, okay? And then they talked about Custom Crafts, which is Claiborne Taylor, and, and he's retired too. So the only commercial property that we have out there is the Moore's General Store that's doing any kind of business right now. This, that's it. So, all right, thank you all.
Heather Moore, Moore's General Store, 336-786-6164. Gentlemen, I believe you have heard Shelton's voice, Shelton Town's voice loud and clear. We say no to this rezoning. Out of respect for your time this evening, we feel it's unnecessary to have every community member come up to voice their concerns over this rezoning in our quaint neighborhood. In the words of your planning board, we are very passionate about this community. We do place a high degree of value on preserving our rural culture. And this is a quality of life issue. It affects the quality of our lives. There's 10 generations, 200 years worth of history tied to many, many of the families that still call Shelton Town home. If these families aren't experts on the quality of life in the Shelton Town community, I'm not sure who would be. Our issue has not been about the Dollar General or this developer. If Terramore would like to build a half a million dollar home on these parcels of land, we'll welcome them to the neighborhood. Hell, the ladies from the church would probably bake them a pie. There's one thing for sure that Mr. Fox has stated, and I believe everybody in this building can agree upon it. Dollar General is not a destination, but Mayberry is. Let's keep it that way. Citizens of Shelton Town, with a round of applause, please let our commissioners know we say no to rezoning. Thank you, gentlemen.
Anyone else for public comments?
My name is Susan Krepps, and I'm the piano player at Shelton Church of the Brethren, which is directly across Quaker Road from the site that they'd like to build the convenience store on. On Sunday mornings, I'm sitting at that end of the building, playing the piano and trying to worship God. Am I going to be trying to worship God and hearing trucks pulling in and out? Traffic going in and out? If there's a business there, there will be traffic. There will be people going in and out, or there wouldn't be a reason to have a business there. I am emotional about this. I'll admit that. I was born and raised in that neighborhood. My grandparents were born and raised there, my great grandparents, and on and on and on for 200 years, over 200 years. We live there, we have our way of life, we love our neighborhood. We are perfectly capable of driving two miles to a grocery store, convenience store, whatever, if we need something that we can't get right there in our, within Moore's or Busy Bee. But nine times out of 10, we don't have to. I have moved away and lived in 17 different states. I've been to all but two, Montana and Wyoming. I may have been to those, but I was traveling with a band, I might have been asleep on the bus. But I always come back home. Home to me is Shelton Town. Right now, I live in Flat Rock. It's only three miles to my mama's house where I had been, I had lived from the time I was eight years old until I moved out on my own. That's a long time, that's 61 years that my mother has lived in that house. She still has the same phone number that we had when I was eight years old. She'll be 92 August 1st. Her sister will be 95 in October. They don't need to have the peace and quiet of our neighborhood disturbed by a business that the neighborhood does not want. By the way, I'm Susan Krepps, K-R-E-P-P-S. My phone number is 336-648-1064, home number 336-755-2499. But I am emotional about this, and if we were not emotional about it, we wouldn't be here tonight. If it didn't matter to us, we wouldn't be here tonight. But it matters a lot. Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Ralph Smith, 4106 Westfield Road in Mount Airy, North Carolina. You can tell I'm not from here, thank you. I moved down here four years ago to seek out a nice, quiet rural area. I grew up in Nanuett, New York, 30 miles north and west of New York City. And what you folks are considering is exactly the best thing that happened in Rockland County. This applicant tonight for rezoning, who out here is next? When big business comes and says, I got money, give me 140 acres, give me your 30 acres, and it gets destroyed. 10 minutes for me, on my house, I go downtown. I pass shops, planning. I don't really need another retail thing in a rural community. So with that, what I'm asking you to really consider here is really the rezoning part of this. Once it starts, it never stops, and it just becomes more and more of big city in a rural area. So I thank you very much.
At this time, I'm going to close the public hearing and open back up the regular meeting to consider this rezoning.
Mr. Chairman, you and I represent this community of Shelton Town. I'd like to go ahead and make a motion that we deny the rezoning request, statement, statement of consistency, sorry. I'll wait then.
You need a statement of consistency, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'll make that motion for the statement of consistency, please.
A motion by Commissioner Harris on the statement of consistency. Do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Tucker. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and ayes have it.
I'd like to go ahead and make a motion, me and I represent Shelton Town, that we deny the rezoning request.
Have a motion by Commissioner Johnson. I will second that motion. Any discussion?
Yeah, before we vote, Mr. Chairman, can I say something? Yes, sir. Yeah, I was talking to Mr. Fox on the phone this afternoon. We serve on another board together, and I told him, you know, just take Dollar General out of the equation for a moment. We've got a community that's come together and spoke. You banded together and poured your hearts out into this. And wouldn't it be wonderful if we could stick together of everything that's going on in the United States today? We could come together and do this every town.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate all you folks coming out. I like to know how people feel about things. Some of you pointed out, there is a process on rezoning at this county, and this board takes very seriously. First process is going to the planning director, figuring out the ropes on where you go. Somewhere along the way, you go before the planning board. There's a public hearing at the planning board. That's an opportunity for the facts to come out. It's also an opportunity to see why, and see how people feel, and why they feel that way. In our county general use plan, it's not necessarily cut and dried, in my opinion. I think you can read it. You can read where, yes, we want business on one hand, and on the other hand, you can talk about all kinds of reasons why you want to protect the integrity and the sanctity of any rural community, particularly if you don't have a real need for a retail business. I think that's worth listening to. The planning board heard this, and the planning board denied the rezoning request unanimously. That's why we have a process to see what people think. It does matter what people think. And not only has the planning board voted no, and denied it unanimously, I'm one commissioner that agrees with that decision. I feel like the people that have spoken clearly, I feel like it makes a difference what people think. And I have heard you, and I believe a person's home is his castle, and I believe a lot of you folks out there think your castle don't need to be disturbed with another retail business, and I agree with you. Thank you, Mr. Chris.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Yes, and I would like to say that there are a lot of factors in making, for me to make my particular decision on this, and one is obviously the opposition from the community. I also think that 1.7 miles from another Dollar General is quite close, and actually, I think I voted against that one as well, because it's proximity to Flat Rock Elementary School. That's some years ago, and I don't remember the particular details, but nevertheless, I agree with Commissioner Tucker, and I've said it many times up here on rezoning cases. Every man's home is his castle, and the sanctity of that home, and the investment and the value and the love that they have for their particular residents and their property and their land is of paramount importance to me. Dollar General is welcome in Surrey County. We have said that up here many times. I think it was even said at the last one or two meetings ago. And I do shop at Dollar General over in State Road and Thurman, which is in Wilkes, near where I live. And at the end of the day, we can use pretty much any criteria we want to in approaching these rezoning cases. We do have a land use plan. We do operate under statements of consistency, which indicates that everyone is treated equally and valued equally. But nevertheless, as I was told when I came on this board, if you've got three votes, you can do pretty much anything you want to up here, unless it gets you put in jail. So the private property is very important to me, and the quality of life. I happen, I went to Banner Town to elementary school. I grew up down at Boon's Hill, and I know this community very, very well, and I knew Ms. Hyatt's father, Bill Hyatt, very well. But, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to have to oppose this, and I will side with the citizens of that community. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Johnson, you have anything else to say?
Okay. And I'll just kind of piggyback on that a little bit, that the rezonings that I've been involved with, and of course with Dollar General, we welcome, we want to be business friendly, but also at the same time, having grown up with some of these folks and knowing a lot of you, this is a residential area, and a lot of these businesses have been there. I'm 54 years old, and those businesses have been there as long as I can remember. And so for me, it's about keeping it a residential area. It's not about Dollar General, it's not about Moore's General Store, it's not about any of that, it's about residential. I would not want it beside of me. So that's where I'm coming from. So I also will be a no vote. So, go ahead.
Just one little comment. I want this whole room to know that I'm half-hyped.
So we had a motion, a second, we had a discussion. All in favor of not rezoning, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and ayes have it. All right. We're going to back up at this time. And Kim Morrison and Jay Temple, Mount Airy City Schools, and Bill Powell, the LT Consulting, and Yancey Powers Architects, if they would come forward, please. You want to take a short?
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, let's take a five-minute break.
We're going to take a five-minute break.
Jay, how you doing?
I think Moore has fresh. Yeah. Yeah, they're always a, remember a dollar moment around here. Yeah, yeah, really, yeah. Triva, good seeing you.
Good seeing you.
Yeah. Yep, yep.
we can come up and we'll actually save enough money to pay for them. So which will eliminate a burden for her to have to come back or the school system to have to come back later on and ask y'all. So we are, the Board of Education has hired the architect. We have publicized RFQ. This is actually a new process for me. I've been reading and trying to educate myself. I understand, I talked to one of your commissioners that y'all built a couple of buildings with, using the CMAT risk. So I'm actually looking forward to seeing how this works, seeing what the savings. And before you enter into it, when you know what the maximum cost is, there can't be any change orders. I mean, what better, what, how much better can it get as far as I'm concerned? Because I'm used to doing the same thing that you guys have done for years and years, and that is do a hard bid. And then, you know, you get the contractor out there, and he's just licking his chops waiting on change orders. So anyway, that, we're here. If I can answer any questions. If not, I know that wonderful audience behind us since everybody left is, they didn't want to hear a thing we had to say, didn't they? But we are moving forward. And again, you have the schedule, and we can come back anytime. We can let you know individually what things are and how they're happening. If you'll just let us know, I'll be more than happy to, to contact you and, and keep you informed. Any questions?
I just have one comment. Dr. Morrison probably don't remember. She's not that old. But I was one of the first students to be in that building. George Williams taught mechanical drawing in the first room on the left. And that, I think the whole basement was, I called it building trades. And this Mr. McCraw, who was a jack of all trades at that time, I still remember some of the things, laying brick and welding and, and building buildings to go in, you know, you know. So it's just, and I'm glad for you. I'm glad you got the money. I'm glad you got the grant. I don't begrudge 5% coming from county coffers at all. So I'm glad for you. I wish we could, I wish we had a whole pile of grants to go along with the Surrey County Schools buildings that are, that are much older. But congratulations.
Thank you. And the building trades are still happening in the basement. So you come on down, look at construction and woodworking. It's really great to see all that alive down there.
And Mr. Johnson, also, you know, the school system needs to thank all of y'all because if you recall, Dr. Morrison originally didn't ask for the entire thing, and y'all encouraged her to go back and write the grant for the, in fact, you and.
We had a phase two, which had the covered walkways and the climate-controlled building. And you said, just go ahead and put it in the application. We'll cover the 5%. And we did, and we got the whole, all of that, so.
And so that's a special thanks to you guys for at least backing the school system. So we really, really appreciate it.
Good news. I want to say I'm glad. I think it's a big, big boost for, for what you are doing over there. And these technical skilled trades. It's just, it really, looking over education the last 20, 30, 40 years and stuff, I'm excited to see schools doing this, and especially you here in our county. And, and I, you know, even, I think it'll light a, a fire or spark a match or whatever for kids to look at these things and perhaps go into them because it's greatly needed. And these fields pay well. And, and it just, the more knowledge you can acquire about all of those things that this entails is such a great benefit to our young people. And really, it's, it's, it's worked, for me, it's where it's at. The future is, is the skilled technical education, the trades and, and learning about those things. So I'm very excited for you and very happy for you. Thank you.
There is one other thing. I do have, or we do have in the central office, a set of full-scale drawings already completed. If any of y'all would like for me to come down and sit down with you and show you exactly what the plan is, I'll be more than happy to. Or if you'd like to come over, I'll be glad to go over in any time.
And our requirement in our strategic plan that should be kicking in this year is 100% of our children have to go through the CTE pathways. So they have to take multiple courses in career technical education, not just choose to. So once that kicks in, you'll see everyone going through one of those, one of those pathways. And so that will be awesome. And our building will really help to make sure when students go down there, they see it as one of the top programs, not one of the programs, you know, in the past, but in the future. So thank you very much, and we'll be glad to update you at any point.
Thank you.
Thanks.
County Mayor Kristinoff.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First item is more informational for the next couple of meetings for the board. And that is that it's Legislative Goals Time with the Association of County Commissioners as they prepare for the long session of the General Assembly next year. This is a couple of months earlier. Typically, we begin working on this in the fall. And Legislative Goals Conference is typically in, in early January. My understanding is this year, the Legislative Goals Conference will be in mid-November. And so the deadline for Legislative Goals to be submitted to the association will be September 12th. So I would just ask the board, if you have any goals, please send those my way. I did solicit from the department heads over the last month. I received one from the tax office. So that will, we'll kind of start our list. And then any others that the board may want to include, just send those to me. I will provide a draft during the August meeting. And then at the very latest, we'll need to get final approval to our list at the first meeting in September.
Also, the legislative goals, I don't remember what we had on there. We typically had the, the sales tax, the transportation, Article 43, I think it's 43, that'll, that, yeah, that allow, that would allow us to use, to go for an extra quarter cent sales tax. So I, I would like for that to be one of our goals. Because we've had it for many, many years as a goal. And I, I think it's a good, good option for counties like us to, you know, for, instead of putting all the burden for revenue on the property owners, which we're very, you know, glad to have the, the sales tax rate, I mean, the property tax rate that we do. But, but that, having the option to do that is another tool in our kit that would allow us to keep property taxes down and, and continue to do well, so.
Okay, I will, I will get that added.
Like, I'd like to echo Commissioner Harris' about the quarter cent. This, we have an update right here. We're talking a quarter or cent. Probably, if it ever happens, we're, we're, we're talking close to $3 million right now, that quarter percent.
And I agree. And, you know, it's an interesting economy, and inflation, I think, is coming, or I believe it's here. But, you know, our, our sales, our internet sales have continued to be great. And I think people are still going to buy, and they're going to buy from their own home. And this is one way to still capture some of that activity. And it was, it was well worth the effort when a previous board passed a resolution to do a special quarter cent tax. It's been, it's been a big boost for the county taxpayers. And there's less than 40% of the people, when you ask, that they'll tell you that I actually pay property tax. That's hard to imagine, but go to the tax office, they'll tell you that or lower, that percentage or lower. So, you know, it's a, it takes a whole lot of burden off from a whole lot of people that's paying the biggest part of the load. And I echo those sentiments as well.
Commissioner Tucker, best I can remember, when you came on board, we was talking $2 million.
That's right.
Now, it looks like to me, with two more months to be reported, we're going to hit, we're going to hit right at $3 million.
And just to point out in comparison, and I don't, I'm not picking on them. I'm just telling you how astonishing it was to me. When we came on the board, I found out that the quarter cent sales tax in Wilkes County brought in exactly 1/4 of that $2 million. So when we were bringing in $2 million back in those days, they were bringing that quarter cent on their retail sales. Only brought them in a fourth of that much money. I, I couldn't believe it. And actually, I verified it with the town manager at that time. Now, what they're doing.
So which will eliminate a burden for her to have to come back or the school system to have to come back later on and ask out. So we are, the Board of Education has hired the architect. We have publicized RFQ. This is actually a new process for me. I've been reading and trying to educate myself. I understand. I talked to one of you commissioners that y'all built a couple of buildings with using the CM at risk. So I'm actually looking forward to seeing how this works, seeing what the savings and before you enter into it, when you know what the maximum cost is, there can't be any change orders. I mean, what better, what, how much better can it get as far as I'm concerned? Because I'm used to doing the same thing that you guys have done for years and years, and that is do a hard bid. And then, you know, you get the contractor out there and he's just licking his chops waiting on change orders. So anyway, that we're here. If I can answer any questions, if not, I know that wonderful audience behind us since everybody left is they didn't want to hear a thing we had to say, didn't they? But we are moving forward. And again, you have the schedule and we can come back anytime. We can let you know individually what things are and how they're happening. If you'll just let us know, I'll be more than happy to to contact you and and keep you informed. Any questions?
I just have one comment. Dr. Morrison probably don't remember. She's not that old. But I was one of the first students to be in that building. George Williams taught mechanical drawing in the first room on the left. And that, I think the whole basement was, I called it building trades. And this Mr. McCraw, who was a jack of all trades at that time, I still remember some of the things, laying brick and welding and and building buildings to go in, you know, you know. So it's just, and I'm glad for you. I'm glad you got the money. I'm glad you got the grant. I don't begrudge five percent coming from county coffers at all. So I'm glad for you. I wish we could, I wish we had a whole pile of grants to go along with the Surrey County Schools buildings that are that are much older. But congratulations.
Thank you. And the building trades are still happening in the basement. So you come on down, look at construction and woodworking. It's really great to see all that alive down there.
And Mr. Johnson also, you know, the school system needs to thank all of y'all because if you recall, Dr. Morrison originally didn't ask for the entire thing and y'all encouraged her to go back and write the grant for the, in fact, you and.
I remember. We had a phase two, which had the covered walkways and the climate control building. And you said, just go ahead and put it in the application. We'll cover the five percent. And we did, and we got the whole, all of that. So.
And so that's a special thanks to you guys for at least backing the school system. So we really, really appreciate it.
Good news. I want to say I'm glad. I think it's a big, big boost for, for what you are doing over there. And these technical skilled trades, it's just, it really, looking over education, the last 20, 30, 40 years and stuff, I'm excited to see schools doing this, and especially you here in our county. And, and I, you know, even, I think it'll light a, a fire or spark a match or whatever for kids to look at these things and perhaps go into them because it's greatly needed. And these fields pay well. And, and it just, the more knowledge you can acquire about all of those things that this entails is such a great benefit to our young people. And really, it's, it's, it's worked, for me, it's where it's at. The future is, is the skilled, technical education, the trades and, and learning about those things. So I'm very excited for you and very happy for you. Thank you.
There is one other thing. I do have, or we do have in the central office, a set of full scale drawings already completed. If any of y'all would like for me to come down and sit down with you and show you exactly what the plan is, I'll be more than happy to. Or if you'd like to come over, I'll be glad to go over in any time.
And our requirement in our strategic plan that should be kicking in this year is 100% of our children have to go through the CTE pathways. So they have to take multiple courses in career technical education, not just choose to. So once that kicks in, you'll see everyone going through one of those, one of those pathways. And so that will be awesome. And our building will really help to make sure when students go down there, they see it as one of the top programs, not one of the programs, you know, in the past, but in the future. So thank you very much. And we'll be glad to update you at any point.
Thank you.
Our county manager, Kristinoff.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First item is more informational for the next couple of meetings for the board. And that is that it's legislative goals time with the Association of County Commissioners as they prepare for the long session of the General Assembly next year. This is a couple of months earlier. Typically, we begin working on this in the fall. And the Legislative Goals Conference is typically in, in early January. My understanding is this year, the Legislative Goals Conference will be in mid-November. And so the deadline for Legislative Goals to be submitted to the Association will be September 12. So I would just ask the board, if you have any goals, please send those my way. I did solicit from the department heads over the last month, I received one from the tax office. So that will kind of start our list. And then any others that the board may want to include, just send those to me. I will provide a draft during the August meeting. And then at the very latest, we'll need to get final approval to our list at the first meeting in September.
Also, the legislative goals, I don't remember what we had on there. We typically had the, the sales tax, the transportation article 43, I think it's 43, that'll, that, yeah, that allow, that would allow us to use, to go for an extra quarter cent sales tax. So I, I would like for that to be one of our goals. Because we've had it for many, many years as a goal. And I, I think it's a good, good option for counties like us to, you know, for, instead of putting all the burden for revenue on the property owners, which we're very, you know, glad to have the, the sales tax rate, I mean, the property tax rate that we do. But, but that, having the option to do that is another tool in our kit that would allow us to keep property taxes down and, and continue to do well. So.
Okay, I will, I will get that added.
Like, I'd like to echo Commissioner Harris's about the quarter cent. This, we have an update right here. We're talking a quarter of a cent. Probably, if it ever happens, we're, we're, we're talking close to $3 million right now, that quarter percent.
And I agree. And, you know, it's an instant economy and inflation, I think, is coming or I believe it's here. But, you know, our, our sales, our internet sales have continued to be great. And I think people are still going to buy, and they're going to buy from their own home. And this is one way to still capture some of that activity. And it was, it was well worth the effort when a previous board passed a resolution to do a special quarter cent tax. It's been, it's been a big boost for the county taxpayers. And there's less than 40% of the people, when you ask that, they'll tell you that actually pay property tax. That's hard to imagine. But go to the tax office, they'll tell you that or lower, that percentage or lower. So, you know, it's a, it takes a whole lot of burden off from a whole lot of people that's paying the biggest part of the load. And I echo those sentiments as well.
Commissioner Tucker, best I can remember, when then you came on board, we was talking 2 million.
That's right. That's right.
Now, it looks like to me, with two more months to be reported, we're gonna hit, we're gonna hit right at 3 million.
And just to point out in comparison, and I don't, I'm not picking on, I'm just telling you how astonishing it was to me. When we came on the board, I found out that the quarter cent sales tax in Wilkes County brought in exactly one fourth of that $2 million. So when we were bringing in 2 million back in those days, they were bringing that quarter cent on their retail sales, only brought them in a fourth that much money. I, I couldn't believe it. And actually, I verified it with the town manager at that time. Now, what they're doing now, I don't know. Commissioner Harris is not, is that not accurate?
It is. John Yates, the county manager over there, said the quarter, a quarter cent over there would be, bring in 500,000.
You and I asked him up at Cross Creek when I first came on board, because we realized it was 2 million. And I was just really astonished when I, and, and, and what I'm simply saying to say all that is, with our 52 highway and our 74 connector and 77 interchange, and with our municipalities as they are, and the sales that they create, and the tourism that they bring in. Surrey County has a lot to be thankful for on retail sales. And, and so a quarter of a cent on capturing some of those gains is, is really big, and has been really big for this fiscal budget for this board.
Well, and the thing about it is, the sales tax is the fairest tax.
It is.
Everybody pays it. I mean, the, you know, the deadbeats, the dope dealers, the working people, the just and the unjust pay, pay the sales tax, that's for sure. And, you know, you can't keep soaking homeowners, especially at a time like this. I mean, to put the burden, all of it on homeowners, just doesn't seem fair to me. And, you know, folks who own large tracts of land that are in agriculture or forestry get the present use value. So.
Right.
I mean, it's the homeowner and the, the small homeowner that gets the stick. So that's what the sales tax does, is help that situation.
Yeah, it has.
Mr. Harris, did you mention what the, the intent of what would the quarter cent go for?
Twenty-eight votes.
Oh, yeah, it was 28.
It won on a ballot in Surrey County by 28 votes.
What would be, what would we use it for?
Oh, well, we could use it for anything we wanted to. Yeah.
Yeah. Isn't that right?
I'm just saying, like, others, we have 60% for schools, and another 40% for schools. We determine that?
Well, I mean, you know, it depends on what you want to put in your legislative goals.
Yeah.
Yeah. But my, I think it'd be better put, better off in the, yeah, the general fund.
All right. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to, hopefully, that we could all agree that that could be our top priority possibly. I'm good with that.
Suits me.
I'm good with that.
Might even have another couple of other ideas later to go under that top priority.
Yeah. And so you're going, you will need this before our next meeting ends, is that right?
Well, I'll compile what I receive, and I'll include that in a packet for review. But we'll have until the first meeting in September finalized. Yep. So two more meetings. That's okay. All right. Next item is a landfill waiver fee request from Lynn's Medical Loan Closet. This is a ministry of Trendy Episcopal Church and Grace Moravian Church in Mount Erie. And they loan the community free of charge medical equipment, you know, such as wheelchairs, shower benches, walkers, et cetera. Those items are donated to them. Unfortunately, sometimes they do receive items they cannot use or have a shorter life as far as usage. And like everyone else, they would like to dispose those in the landfill. They are not only approved nonprofit fee waiver list that is kept at the scale house at the landfill. And they are requesting that they be added to that list so that when they bring items from the, from the medical closet, they can no longer use if they don't have to pay the tipping fee at the landfill.
Now, that sounds great. And I kind of like it. But I'm just curious, what, what is our general county policy toward other nonprofits? Because there's a, there's a whole host of them. What, what do we do for those?
You've always, the board, whoever's on the board is always taking them on a case by case basis. And those that receive approval go on the approved list that the staff over there utilizes. Whenever those groups come through, you know, for instance, usually the Baptist men, some of these groups always also get, you know, building permit fee waivers if they're involved in projects like building handicap ramps and things of that nature. But.
Habitat for Humanity.
Habitat for Humanity.
Do, do we, do we have the, do we say, do we have the say to add them to the list? Or is that something?
That, that's at the board's discretion.
Oh, okay. Well, Mr. Chairman, I know, I have dealt with these good folks. My wife has had at least three occasions that we've gone up there and borrowed the, the, these donated items. And it's very great that these two churches have come together and spend their time and the resources that they have. I, I would, I would like to make a motion that we could add, add them to the list. They wouldn't have, not have to pay a, a fee when they go to the landfill to dispose. And I'd also add to that motion that we waive, somewhere I read, it went to like $3, is that correct?
$2.58, I believe.
Yeah. And that we waive, that, that we waive that fee.
Have a commit, have a motion with Commissioner Johnson. Do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Marion. Any discussion?
I was just going to say, yeah, I'm all for this. I, I just think we ought to be, we shouldn't, well, to always kind of be consistent. And, you know, we, we shouldn't do a lot for one group that we're not willing to do for another. In this case, I know they're a very wonderful group, and they do a lot of good things. I also think they're probably taking a lot of medical equipment that probably should have been disposed of at the landfill to start with. So, you know, this board always has the, the ability and discretion to go back and, I guess, review on a case by case in the event we ever create a monster that we can unwind. But I, I, I'm, I'm all for this with that note.
Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And ayes have it.
Uh, next item Ed's going to handle there was a request for reconsideration on the Old Westfield property. And I'll let Ed cover that.
We had an original bid for the Old Westfield School property, $150,000, and it was subsequently rescinded. Then the board received a, another bid for $102,000. It was entered by Mike Bennett in capacity with his representation of John and Beverly Shelton. And at the last meeting, the board determined that that was an insufficient amount. Mr. Bennett contacted me after that decision to ask if this board would reconsider that offer as sufficient, $102,000. Told him no idea, but the board had acted and I would bring it back up for action or no action. His point was that property value. I'd met with him and reviewed the appraisal and discussed the various problems with the property. I truly believe the offer was fair and in the best interest of the county to proceed with the sale. I reached out to get your opinion on whether the board would reconsider. Basically, he said that they discounted the value of the buildings because they were all depreciated out and would not fit into their redevelopment plan. So the offer was based on land value and the cost of removal of the buildings.
And how long is that offer good for, Ed?
Well, if the board indicated that it would reconsider, I mean, that it would be willing to reconsider a similar bid, then we would have to go back to Mr. Bennett and have him provide another offer, another bid bond. So I guess, sort of testing waters. Keep in mind that whatever y'all do, if you it would involve another newspaper public notice, which traditionally you guys have assessed to the successful bidder, that would not be an out of pocket issue. Then you also reserve the right, even if you tentatively accept a $102,000 bid, again, you have the right to object it when the time comes.
And, and the offer on the table is now, say again.
$102,000.
$102,000.
What is the tax va, is that the tax value on the land?
I don't have, I don't have that.
No.
I'm mistaken. It's about 240.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. He's saying that he's taking into consideration what it's worth getting rid of the buildings, I think.
And I do, I mean, the buildings are in bad shape.
But they are, are, are they in such bad shape to the extent that, 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 that there is no renovation prospect? And that, that it actually is a, a cost of removal? I mean, are they?
I think that would require a.
We surplus them.
Yeah, we surplus them, but.
Well, I understand that.
That would require a evaluation by professionals, I think. I'm gonna, I'm gonna say this. My opinion is that we don't have to take any action tonight. And I think, we think, I think we think about this and not accept the $102,000 tonight would be my opinion. And I'll make a motion to that effect. Mr. Chairman. Oh, okay. All right. No action. All right. Well, consensus. All right.
Give that.
Yep.
Mr. Johnson, you give that?
All right. Next item are some board appointments. And the first is related to the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council. There's three different areas here. I'm gonna take them one at a time, just so they don't get confusing. The first would be to recommend a new member, which would be a county commissioner appointee, and that's Amanda Dollinger. And these are always recommended by Rusty Slade, chairman of the council. I'll put that one to you first, Mr. Chairman.
Amanda Dollinger.
I make a motion to Amanda Dollinger to JCPC. I'm on that committee and I believe she'd be a good addition.
I have a motion by Commissioner Marion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Harris. Any discussion?
I'd like to know, could somebody tell me just a little bit about her, please?
Dr. Reeves, why, why don't you?
Dr. Eddie Larry, she's a parent. It's on my parent advisor camp.
Okay.
Thank you. All right. Have a motion. Second?
Oh.
Yeah, I got a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And ayes have it.
Also, with the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, following current members have agreed to serve another term, Joe Rick, who's a county commissioner appointee, Daniel White, who's a Parks and Rec representative, Jeff Eads, who is the MCO representative from Partners, and then of course Rusty Slade, who's a commissioner appointee. I'll put those to you, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion to reappoint Joe Rick, Daniel White, Jeff Eads, and Rusty Slade.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Johnson. I'll second that motion. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And ayes have it.
And the following is just information on these are slate of officers for fiscal year 22, 23. Nikki Hull will be the chairperson. Rusty Slade will be vice chairperson, and Tamara Veet will be secretary. Next is an appointee for, a reappointment actually, for the Board of Health. Dr. Brooke Lowry serves as the dentist member to the Surrey County Board of Health. Her first term will expire at the end of this month. And if she is eligible and willing to serve another term, both Mr. Eddie Jordan, Chair of the Board of Health, and Samantha Ainge recommend this reappointment.
I'll make a motion that we accept this suggestion on reappointment.
I have a motion by Commissioner Tucker. Do I have a second? I'll second that. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oh, you know, ayes have it.
Uh, next item is a follow up to the Hep Petra addendum to gas rights. Jessica's out on vacation this week. I know Ed's been involved. It'll give you a brief overview.
Yeah, if you recall, Hep Petra was doing a refinance and acquired an addendum to current lease. And y'all approved it, subject to Hep Petra providing four exhibits and for the memorandum of lease that they didn't send along the first time. We have since gotten all of that. And we will execute it. I've asked Nathan to send it back to Hep Petra to get an original signature so we can record those documents. That's sort of what is in the works, subject to your final approval tonight.
Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to follow the recommendation of the county attorney here on the Petra gas contract. Does that sound right?
Lease amendment.
The lease addendum or amendment? Addendum, okay.
Motion by Commissioner Harris. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Johnson. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Uh, next item is an update on the Surrey County Schools North Surrey Boiler Room leak. And Dr. Reeves is here. I'll ask him to come forward at this time. Now, the board discussed this, I believe, about two months ago. And he's back with additional information on the insurance, insurance companies' willingness to contribute to the overall cost.
Good evening, commissioners. I come to you tonight with some good news. Been in touch with Liberty Mutual, our insurance company that covers us, also with Yogi Wright here from Surrey Insurance. And Yogi has really stepped up to the plate. Okay. Well, I know it's been a long night, but you're supposed to, that was kind of, I thought that was a pretty good joke. I thought that was pretty good. So I got an email this afternoon from Chad Miller, and I'm, I'm just going to read it to you, because this is good news. Per our prior discussion, we are waiting final approval to make an ex gratia payment in the amount of $50,000 for our claim. This is not admission of coverage as there is in fact no coverage based on the cause of the loss. However, due to the service delays from our vendor, we are seeking an exception. As soon as the final review slash approval is completed, I will notify you, was told three to four weeks. And, and obviously, the service provider is the inspector of the hose I shared with you in the last meeting. I told, they told me it would be two weeks. I've been in touch with them, been in touch with Yogi, been back in touch with them, had video phone conferences. And so we, we've kind of stayed in touch. And Liberty Mutual has, has come to us with this. So at least that's something I can bring to the table to help offset this, this bill for $233,000 from Ultimate Environmental. Also, we were able to save, I think, $34,000 on another project. So I think what that would bring the total to is 149,000 versus 233,000. So what I would say to you is that once this check was cut to us, I would simply cut that to the, to the county for the payment. Mr. Kohler did reach out to me late last week, inquiring about payment. And I told him I would be in touch as soon as possible. And you got the photos. Do you, I can, I can share those.
So Dr. Reeves, you gonna supply checks to Surrey County? But we already got some money in our coffers, 37,000, is that right? Or is that in your coffers?
Oh, it's you.
It's approved. Okay.
It was, it's in yours. We didn't request it because we saved, saved 34,000 on a, on a, a construction project. So that's money we didn't request. So I think you already have it. But this is money we would cut back to you.
I think I understood you say right at $150,000 balance.
That's right. That's right.
That would, would require board discussion and action on how to.
And refresh my memory, Dr. Reeves, that 50,000 that we talked about on our previous discussion of this, we weren't sure the insurance company was going to pay anything.
That's right.
We elected to wait and see if they would.
That's right. And in a phone conversation with Yogi Wright, he said, chances are, if, if, if this third party contractor had done an inspection quicker, we probably wouldn't have gotten money.
And just, just for curiosity, and, and I can't remember, I think it's right, was that the max on what they would pay per instance on something like this?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Seems like we've explored, explored that about as far as we can take it.
What was the verdict on the hose?
Glad we, I'd see what the insurance company would do.
So, Mr. Waltz, there's been no verdict on the hose. And that's kind of been, it's kind of been a, a bit of a bone of contention with myself. Why, if, if there's no coverage, then why inspect the hose to begin with? But then, send me back the hose so that we could explore other options if need be. But I would like to know the third party. And and chance, and, and here's. send me back the hose so that we could explore other options if need be, but I would like to know the third party, and, and chance, and here's what's happened. One of their engineers went out on maternity leave and then decided not to come back, another one quit. I mean, they've been through, I think they're on their fourth engineer, and this is a specialty project, is what I've been told. So this firm that they've used to inspect the hoses is in Atlanta, Georgia, or in the outskirts of Georgia. I spoke to the engineer once. So I think that company has experienced turnover, staffing shortages, so they've just, they've not had, I don't know that the hose has been inspected, to be honest with you.
And just because, or if the board, and I'm, you know, we got a local, we got a local provider that's we've stretched a long ways and waiting on the insurance. One time, we decided to hold the payment. I'm about ready to make our, our debt good and pay the bill, just so you know where I'm going. I think that time has come, but I want to make sure that in no way is that admission that we're giving up on an inspection revealing we had a flawed hose, and wherever you can pursue that, I would, I would like to request that you continue to pursue it, even though you might have our, our agreement to pay your vendor. I, I think we ought to extend that. I think it's a shame that a piece of hose that was inspected winds up to be a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar liability for the county, so I want you to pursue that to its fullest.
Will do.
But I will make, does that require my action? I'll make the motion that we make this debt good, we end this, and we want to say how thankful we are to our local vendor for letting us see this process through. I think that was probably vital to see that the insurance company finally decided they might have some reason to help us on it, and so I'll make the motion that, yes, sir.
Sure you add the source of funds in from, in your motion from.
The source of funding being a hundred and forty-nine?
General fund contingency.
Oh, and all the, 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 the dollars that you talked about come out of the general fund contingency, I'll add that to the motion.
I have a motion by Commissioner Tucker, second by Commissioner Marion, any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And ayes have it.
Thank you for your support.
All right, the next item that I have is related to, uh, the Invest in Surrey nonprofit grants. Been a great deal of interest, as you can imagine, over the last few months regarding these funds. And we've been through quite the process over the last few months. The board allocated two point one million for this program. Applications were submitted in late winter and early spring. They were compiled by the staff in the finance office, primarily Denise Brown. Denise and I reviewed them for compliance with the grant programs requirements, and then we submitted them to the finance committee in June for their review discussion and approval recommendations for the full board this evening. In total, we received thirty-seven applications totaling just over four point seven million. The finance committee has successfully reduced the total recommended awards down to the two point one million that's budgeted. And applications had, for the most part, to meet a two-part test by the committee. One, the activity was going to be reasonably connected to a legitimate aim of government. And second, the ultimate gain must be the public, it's not that of an individual or private entity. Uh, we, we used numerous methods to reduce the requests. One primary method was something that was actually built into the guidelines. I think some, some, some organizations recognized, and some maybe just did not as they were working through them, but that was that you could not be awarded an amount that was greater than fifty percent of your organization's annual operating budget. And this was done to, to ensure that the organizations would have the capacity to manage the funds that they may be, that they may would receive. Uh, we did receive numerous requests that exceeded that threshold, and that provided this one method to, to, to lower some of these to get within that two point one million. Another method was that funding could not be used for salaries, benefits, et cetera, because there was no guarantee that these types of expenditures, across the board at least, would result in a tangible outcome that would, that would live on beyond the program, which was one of the goals. Organizations who receive a grant will receive fifty percent in August next month, and the remaining fifty percent in February of twenty-twenty-three. And the finance office will track and, and, and require scheduled reports from each awardee on how the funds are spent. I laid at each of your spots a more detailed spreadsheet the finance committee worked off of, which gives you a little bit more information about what was actually requested, what was awarded, uh, the preliminary recommendation, the finance committee recommendation. Of course, there's nothing in the board approval column, you know, the project type, whether or not it's five oh one C three, and then the public purpose category that each applicant and recipient fall under, whether that's, you know, for instance, social service, public education, public health, public safety. So I will read through the list at this time. Even though Ryan's already printed the newspapers, I think everybody's fully aware of what they're receiving. Yeah, I appreciate that. That's okay. It's public record, so I really can't say anything. First would be the Yakima Valley United Fund, and they would be awarded twelve thousand dollars. Yes Surrey, which is an entrepreneurial group, six thousand two hundred. Surrey Medical Ministries, eighty-nine thousand, three hundred and forty-five dollars. Mountain Park Rescue Squad, seventeen thousand, nine hundred and two dollars. Tiny Tigers Rescue, twenty-nine thousand dollars. Helping Hands of Surrey County, one hundred thousand dollars. Surrey County Schools Educational Foundation, twenty-five thousand dollars. Northern Regional Hospital, five hundred and sixty-four thousand, six hundred and thirty-one dollars. Children's Center of Northwest North Carolina, one hundred thousand dollars. Rockford Preservation Society, fourteen thousand dollars. Mayberry for Paul's, eleven thousand, seven hundred dollars. Surrey County Historical Society, nine thousand, nine hundred dollars. Mountain Area Rescue Squad, forty thousand, five hundred and forty dollars. Mountain Area Library, thirty-nine thousand, seven hundred dollars. Pilot Mountain Rescue Squad, seventy-three thousand, six hundred and seventy-four dollars. United Fund of Surrey County, fifty-nine thousand, two hundred and five dollars. Sandy Level Community Council, six thousand, four hundred and seventy-five dollars. The Dobson Pool, ten thousand dollars. Surrey Friends of Youth, youth, excuse me, thirty thousand dollars. The Dobson Library, sixty thousand dollars. Dobson Rescue Squad, sixty-four thousand, sixty-four dollars. Mountain Area Junior Women's Club, twenty-five thousand dollars, and that's for a project actually at Tharrington Elementary School. The Greater Mountain Area Habitat for Humanity, one hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. The Ark, nine thousand dollars. Grace Clinic and Elkin, forty thousand dollars. Mountain Valley Hospital, twenty-seven thousand, twenty-three dollars. Armfield Recreation Center, one hundred and twelve thousand, five hundred and nineteen dollars. I need to mention something here. Not quite sure how much of this is public information yet, but that facility is about to be sold. And so that amount, the, the new owner has asked us to hold off on cutting that check pending further a discussion.
On what building?
The, the Armfield property. So that one is sort of in limbo. The Birch's Foundation, twenty thousand dollars. The J.J. Jones Alumni Chapter, they, they own and maintain the old auditorium on that campus, fifteen thousand, two hundred dollars. Horn Creek Farm Committee, twelve thousand, nine hundred and fifteen dollars. The Pilot Mountain Library, forty-one thousand, six hundred and ninety-three dollars. U-Chatham Hospital, three hundred thousand dollars. The Elkin Library, thirteen thousand, one hundred and ten dollars, and finally, the Low Gap Library, seven thousand, two hundred and four dollars. And those are the, the ones that have been awarded. I can tell you, one of the few applications that did not, excuse me, was from an organization, unfortunately wasn't a five oh one C three, they were a five oh one C seven, I believe, which is technically a social club. Um, and so there were some little nuances like that. There was another organization that's receiving some, and the finance committee felt like some significant county funding over the next few years, uh, and, and, and felt that was sufficient, and this program could be used for some other organizations, so. I would, uh, related to the Armfield, I would probably hold that one back until we can get further clarification on what the new owner may or may not want to do with those funds.
And, and the details of who they are and what their plans are going forward and so forth.
That's correct. I don't know if I can say much other than that.
Yeah.
And is this all, is this two, two point one me, this is the total right here?
This is it. This is.
I know we had talked about, Eddie and I talked about earlier about, now, you may have had some discussion about it too, about Edward Franklin House needing a roof, and we talked about maybe possibly taking it from this, so we can wait maybe on the Armfield money. If, if that's, that all go to them, or it doesn't go to them, we could talk about where we'll, where we'll.
We could do that, or, you know, um, once you act on this, we can talk about the next spreadsheet here, and we can talk about that here if you'd like.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to personally thank the finance committee for spreading these funds all over Surrey County, it looks like. Thank y'all for y'all's efforts, and narrowing it down, and the efforts you put forward. And, uh, is it okay to go ahead and make a motion to, to approve this with the exception of Armfield Civic Center? These, these members, I'd like to go ahead and make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion for Commissioner Johnson. Do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Tucker, any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And ayes have it.
My final item is also related to Invest in Surrey, but in the overall program, and I, there's another spreadsheet there, it's in small type, I apologize, but. It's an update from what you all have seen, I believe, last, first time was at the end of, near the end of twenty-twenty-one, and then, and then back in the late winter. But those projects that are on here that are identified with green type, those are the ones that are kind of in motion. And then, um, as you can see, I went out and broke out individually all of the community center projects. They were lumped in primarily for one, and, and into one category, but since those have sort of taken on a life of their own in each of the communities, I've broken those out. And we have, I think, to date, we've been able to accommodate the escalating costs that they have all experienced with their various projects. The, at the bottom, you can see there's a remainder number there. Twenty-three thousand, six ninety-two, that's the amount of funds and the overall amount of just over thirteen point nine million that is unallocated at this point. What I would mention to you also is that in the, and I, I know I've talked to a couple of you about this. We may have a few, you know, a couple of hundred thousand dollars left in the airport improvements line there with the hangar construction and the corporate area development. Uh, that may be funds you want to divert towards the terminal project. Uh, that's, like I said, still yet to be seen, but that's a possibility, and then there's the, the, the public water and sewer funds, which really have no identified purpose at this stage, and with the escalating cost and inflation, those dollars aren't gonna be able to be stretched as far, the impact may be minimal on a project just because of the current costs. And as you know, with public water and sewer, there'll be some, you know, as inflation, um, maybe softens in the future, sometimes in that particular area, you don't see a lot of savings. Usually cost, like automobiles, automobiles may not come down very much once inflation sort of runs its course. Construction costs will come back down to some level, but there are just some things that never come back down. And water and sewer construction can be one of those things. So I don't know what kind of bang for our buck we will get, depending on whatever the project may be that the board would consider, so that's just something to keep in mind. But this is an updated spreadsheet as of today, and, uh, we, we've just approved the nonprofit grant, so we will start working on getting award letters out, and I know some of the board's interested in setting up some, some, uh, visits with those groups, so we'll also try to coordinate that in August as well. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you all may have.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. Would, um, would the board consider, is this gonna require any action tonight?
We'll make some changes, yeah, sure.
Well, you know, I don't know, that roof at the Edward Franklin House up there is really expensive, and personally, I would like to see the twenty-three, six ninety-two go to the Surrey County Historical Society that maintains the Edward Franklin House up there. I don't know what the board's feelings are on that as well, but the other thing I wanted to mention in the scope of this entire document here is, um, the, the Surrey County Animal Shelter is going to, in my opinion, needs some, uh, help going forward. Uh, we haven't done anything really extensive over there since I've been on the board, but my personal feeling is that we need to tear that red barn down, and, um, and we need to build some sort of, uh, red steel structure building, you know, like, um, you know, like a Mesco or a Riot, these nice metal buildings you see. Where that barn is over there for extra capacity at the animal shelter. The, that's one of the problems over there now, is there's not a lot of capacity to hold animals, and, um, I just think that, and I think we could do it for, um, you know, these nice metal buildings, like you see these farmers have out here between outside of Dobson here, all of those were built by, you know, some of them are Mesco, and some of them are Riot, W R I G H T, but it's a red steel building, it's kind of like an airplane hangar, and, um, I think you could build one for, you know, in the easy in the two hundred thousand dollar range, um, and, and trick it out on the inside as well. So I didn't, I, I think going forward, like for some of these funds here that, um, that we may not end up using, like some of the water and sewer money, I think, I would hope this board would consider some sort of action at the animal shelter to, um, modernize it just a little bit. Obviously, many years ago, when I first came on the board, we looked at really major renovations at the animal shelter, and even went and visited some like down at Statesville in Ardell County, but, um, and, you know, those are hugely expensive, and we have a lot of, um, you know, we've borrowed money to build a new jail, and all that's ongoing, and you have to put first things first, but nevertheless, I think with these monies that we have, and it's a one-time deal, I, I would hope this board would consider using some of the monies that potentially may not be used for some sort of, um, a new building at the animal shelter in, adjacent to the one we already have, uh, just for expansion and, and extra capacity.
Mr. Chairman, I'm in favor with, uh, Commissioner Harris on the, on the roof at the Edward Franklin Home. Wherever it comes from, if you want to go ahead and use some of the two point one, being Armfield is dropped out for right now, or we have it, we, we'll go and have it undesignated here, either way. Uh, and, and I'll be, I would be fine if some of these things happen, and we come in under budget on some of these things about the, 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 uh, the dog situation, but I, but if nothing else, I would certainly encourage that for next year's budget. Along the dog.
Do we have, do we have, uh, did they give a cost estimate on, on the Edward Franklin House?
Yes, but I don't remember, and it was in some text messages, I think I've already deleted to Annette Ayers. I guess.
I think it's fifty thousand plus.
But whatever it was, I mean, that's a help there to them, I mean.
Well, it's a, they've received some funds from other groups, but, um, it, it, you know, that house has wooden shingles, you know, and, and what they're putting on is a synthetic wooden shingle that'll last a whole lot longer. I think they're making better chowies going forward. It'll look like, it needs to look like, it'll be much more durable, but it's just an expensive, like with any structure of that nature, it'd be, it's, it's just an expense, it's a, it's a big expense, and, um, but, um, they've gotten cost, gotten caught the last couple of years with inflation and other things, and that's what. And that's what's kind of driven that cost up for them. And, um, they just have limited financial capacity for, for a big renovation like.
I spoke with C W Hill about that as well. And, uh, maybe you, were you there?
Yeah, we were over there.
Yeah, yeah. I, I'm going to agree with you that, uh, just to keep us within within the scope of our amounts here for right now, we don't know exactly what's going to be short or what's going to be a win foul. But I agree with that twenty-three thousand and odd some number at the bottom that we, we go ahead and approve that for that Edward Franklin House. I agree with you on that.
Do I have a motion? Mr. Johnson, you want to make a motion?
Well, Commissioner, I, I will, but Commissioner Harris brought it up, but I, I.
Yeah, for the entire document or looking for motion for the entire document or just the add to?
The, the entire document you've approved.
Okay, so the.
What I've been doing.
Three, six ninety-two.
All right, I'll make a motion that we, um, we appropriate twenty-three thousand six hun- six hundred ninety-two dollars to the Surrey County Historical Society for the roof renovation at Edward Franklin House.
Having motion.
From the Invest in Surrey funds.
Having a motion by Commissioner Harris. Do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Tucker. Any further discussion? All in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
And ayes have. I, I think probably my, talking about the animal shelter is maybe get some input. Um, I don't have a problem. I don't have a problem with animal shelter either. Uh, of maybe getting some input and see potentially what that's going to cost and maybe get some estimates and that, that type of thing and maybe.
I'd also be interested in knowing what, excuse me, I'd also be interested in knowing what they're, what they think their need is on that space. And I'm, I'm sure Commissioner Harris, he does his homework. Well, I'm sure.
Well, and I, I had a meeting with some of the, um, animal folks, but I also had a conversation with Larry Lowe, uh, the Chief Deputy Sheriff's Department, uh, who has purview over the, uh, animal shelter now. And, um, he said that he and the sheriff had, um, had had some conversa- conversations along those lines as well. And, um, but we had a really good conversation about, um, ongoing, um, you know, plans at the animal shelter and that sort of thing. But, uh, yes, I have tried to do my homework on this and, and, um, yeah.
So, yeah, I'm, if not available here at some future time, I'm willing to have that conversation as well.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to add to this, uh, that two point two that we got up there at the top. I think Chris has made us aware that we're still sort of, we're waiting on Dobson possibly in. But, uh, I, I like to report to you that Jessica Montgomery at the land, our landfill, she mentioned to me that if we ever have an environmental problem at the landfill, they will require us to put water there. And I just want y'all, I just want to say that. I, I'm not, I'm just saying possibly, you know, we talked about, about helping Dobson. We talked about possibly, you know, wanting to go out to, uh, out here to, you know, Zephyr Road, you know, interchange on seventy-seven such as that. And but we had, we did have it wrote down as maybe the third option, running water to the landfill or fourth item possibly. And I just don't want to forget that, uh, the only, you know, I'm just saying that that's what she said. If we have an environmental problem by the, the, the state will make us put water down there.
I guess we'd get notice of that environmental problem first, probably wouldn't we?
Well, it might, it might not never happen, but it might, it might hit us at the worst time we've ever had and, and having to do it too. So I'm just saying, you know, so.
How, how far a line would that be?
Uh, half a mile, I think.
Half a mile?
Yeah, you know, the city mountain area and town of Pilot Mountain have that interconnected on old fifty-two, so.
It might not even quite, well, probably all the way to where they need it would probably be a half a mile.
You get to run it into the landfill.
Yeah.
That's all I have. Mr. Chairman, we have a request for closed session for legal.
Mister's, Mister's, uh, comments business. Um, I'll start with, uh, Commissioner Marion.
I had an opportunity to speak at a pastor's conference, first annual pastor's conference, uh, last Saturday, Saturday a week ago. Uh, put on by Mr. Brian Hodges and his family at the Heritage Barn. And I'd just like to say that was a, uh, a good start for the first annual one and, uh, everybody had a good time and, and, uh, it was good to see that many pastors in the same room.
I think most of them have gone, but for the internet, uh, home watchers on YouTube, I appreciate everybody's input. We, we, we covered a lot of ground tonight and, uh, appreciate the work of the, uh, various boards that's made some of these monies. Or at least give us some direction on these monies and where they ought to be best spent. Uh, we've spent a lot of money in a lot of Surrey County. Uh, and also, I, I can't help it. It's just, just kind of what makes me tick. I'd also like to remind people that we might not always be able to provide that kind of special allocation. And, uh, so I want to be real cautious with it and I want to spend it wisely. And, uh, I want it, I want to be frugal with it. And I hope people that's receiving it, which sometimes are folks that off absolutely have a need and they need a recurrent light item. But just like to go ahead and make a note and point out that, uh, even though I hope we can do this for a long time, I'm afraid some of this might be a one-time deal. And just want to be fair right up front about, uh, where this money comes from. It does not grow on trees and it still doesn't grow on trees here in Surrey County. Thank you.
Cheers.
And, and I want to say I, I agree there with Commissioner Tucker. Um, it's with mixed emotions that we appropriate, um, these monies. For me it is because, um, I think, you know, this has been highly inflationary and I think it has driven, um, inflation to an unacceptable level in this country. And ultimately the, the folks are paying for it. I mean, you know, it's not, it's not free money and somebody is going to pay for this. And unfortunately they're already doing it, um, due to higher cost for gasoline and uh, all sorts of materials and supplies and food and grocery and, and God knows what all, but, uh, I, I do agree with that. And, uh, but nevertheless, um, we, uh, we have to spend it. I mean, that's.
Yeah, we do.
That's the way it is.
Might, might not be able to do that, not, not be able to replicate that next year.
May not. And so that's the world that we, we have to, uh, operate in the world that, uh, as it is, not what we wish it was. So, uh, but yeah, I agree with you, Commissioner Tucker. Thank you.
Commissioner Johnson?
Uh, I believe I've said enough.
And I, and I'd just like to end on, uh, we had a unfortunate incident on Main Street, Mount Airy, uh, the Main Oak Building, of course collapsed. I would like to give a shout out to our inspections department. Uh, Marty, I guess you were up there. Did you go up there as well? You didn't get to go. Key, key Congress spent a lot of time up there. Uh, and of course, uh, Mountain Fire Department, Police Department. I'm sure there's some other agencies uh, within the county that were involved, but appreciate those folks. Uh, and, you know, what a day, a different, what, what a day, what difference a day makes. Uh, you have a parade on, on the day before and that, that next day that thing collapses. So we're thankful that nothing happened on July fourth, uh, that our citizens were safe, uh, during, during the parade. But I do have a shout out for all the agencies involved in that, uh, in that endeavor. And with that, I'm looking for a motion to go into closed.
So move.
Motion by Commissioner Harris, second by Commissioner Johnson. Any discussion? All in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have.
All right, I am looking for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Commissioner Marion. I do have a second. Mr. Tucker, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good eight night.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
Woo.